As I've shared many times, it does include building a new elementary school either from scratch likely like to say or renovating this elementary school and like I've said many times that is our very next decision. Re-instituting Fortville Elementary as an intermediate school, it's built as one. It's a very expensive school to build and we're going to be able to use it again as an intermediate school without having all of that extra expensive building at intermediate school. We will have to add a little bit of classroom capacity to it, but the other amenities are fine, a little addition to the high school as well and then in the future some time with the middle school. I want to say this, we have years on this because this is what our demographer predicted. However, we're not building anything until we see the whites of their eyes. There's a fine point and not wanting to build too late, but not wanting to build too early. So there's a sweet spot that we're really working very hard to find. We want our AV to grow enough to be able to capture that revenue so that we can pay the bonds for our new construction. If you do that too quickly, then you don't get enough AV to pay for the bonds. If you do it too late, you're way overcrowded. So it's a game that we are playing and it's hard to play, but we're being very intentional with that. Mr. Allup? We're presented with three options. Option one is addition renovation with current administration building into a PK4 building as well as renovating the current transportation building to an admin building because that option would kick us out of here. Right now, we're using the school as an administration building. Option two is a new elementary school on a site yet to be determined with a smaller renovation here. That would involve HVAC and a few other things for sure. Option three is a new elementary school, K through four, on a site yet to be determined. Moving, not moving the pre-K to this iteration of the new elementary school, keeping them here, but needing to put $8 million into this building for the pre-K and then again $2 million for the administration part of this building. Mr. Allup? This year's what Mr. Elkins provided as well as folks from Stifel last month that we looked at the full scope of the potential projects we have in Mount Vernon with our future growth plan. And those will be timed out and stretched out over the course of seven, eight, nine, 10 years. And as our assessed valuation grows, that additional revenue would basically allow us to keep our debt service rate the same even with some of the new construction because some of our debt is going to be falling off. That's just how schools manage their debt service fund and new projects. And I wanted to share that with you tonight. So the report, Mr. Allup, from the virtual town hall meetings, we had a little more than 80 in attendance, not including cabinet presenters, 100 if you want to count everybody. And we had 47 responses to our survey. The respondents to the survey were the majority of parents of current Mount Vernon students. Now, understand that folks that were participating could have chosen multiple roles, for instance, our staff members, some of them are also parents. So this number is going to be larger than the total number of respondents, but I wanted you to share, I wanted to share with you what the demographics of our virtual town hall meetings were. Mr. Allup? This basically asked on a scale of one to 10, how supportive are you with the proposed options? Very highly supportive. So 91% are highly supportive and the remaining are almost highly supportive. So we were very appreciative of that positive feedback and reassurance. Mr. Allup? The next question really was, and I've said this many times, the very next decision we need to make is are we going to build a new elementary school from scratch or are we going to renovate this building into another elementary school, 21st century elementary school? And we asked folks to respond on a scale of one to five where, I think it's written in here, basically renovate this building was a one. New building on a site yet to be determined was a five. So if you were right in the middle, you would answer a three and five people answered a three. All right, let's split down the middle. If you combine the fours and the fives, you have 55.4% of the folks preferred constructing new from scratch and 34.1% preferred renovating the school. So you can see that there's some polar differences there, that's fine. Out of 47 respondents, we did have 17 additional comments that they provided and the themes, a couple of these were pretty thin, but at least they were mentioned at least twice. I wanted to share that with you. So the themes were somewhat in our next school to be away from our main campus. Some feel the cost differential between renovation and new is not that large. Some are concerned about traffic and parking and then someone to know more about what a new building would look like. And those are some great questions and we are very prepared to answer those, Mr. Allup. But before we, I turn it back over to you for your motion and potential deliberation and then if that's what you choose to do, I would make a quick introduction again. I want to step out and say right now that I am not recommending that you consider option three. Reasons for that are it is the same price tag as option two. Remember, option three is keeping the pre-kindergarten students here in this building and building a new school off-site. Our reasons for not recommending option three really are too bold, oh, three if you count the fact that it's the exact same amount of money as option two. So then it's left with two other reasons and that's really efficiency and support. First of all, we would have to operate a whole new caf, an additional cafeteria. If there were no preschool students here and we had a preschool with an elementary school, we can operate that with one cafeteria. Not a big thing, but certainly measurable enough to pay attention to. The other thing is, and I've learned this from personal experience, the support needed for preschool, even though we have a phenomenal coordinator for our preschool program, that level of support needed by an administrator at times is really essential and removing them from having that level of support just doesn't give them what they need, in my opinion. And like I said, I've experienced that both ways in my previous career and found that it's much better to have preschool associated with an elementary school for that extra support. So that, if you agree with my assertion, of course, you don't have to, if you agree with my assertion, that leaves you with two options. So at this point, I will turn it back over to you, Mrs. Freeman, and if you choose to have a deliberation after a motion, I will make some introductions.
Okay. So what we'll need to do is make a motion. If somebody wants to make a motion on one of our options, then we can have discussion about all the options. Or we can discuss unless somebody needs a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we, that we move forward with considering option two as a pathway forward.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been moved by Mike, seconded by Tony, that we move forward with option two. Do we have any discussion? Option two is the new elementary, pre-K and renovating the current admin building.
Mrs. Freeman, if you allow, I would like to introduce folks because they are available to answer your questions during your discussion and I think Mark Beebe is going to be the point answer person from Lancer Plus Beebe.
Hi, Mark.
So that's Mark Beebe from Lancer Plus Beebe. We also have Terry Lancer from Lancer Plus Beebe, one of the partners, and Vishav Biliyev. He's our point person that supports our district quite a bit. So gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. So Mark will jump up at any and all moments that you have questions for him.
Okay. So make sure you guys use your mic when you do this so that everybody can hear the questions. I'll start, I guess. I have to admit, I'm torn. I mean, I look at all the options and I can agree that maybe we don't look at option three, but option one, option two, I've been back and forth this whole time, you know? Let's do the brand new, let's not, let's be reasonable and do the other, whether you call it reasonable or not. And I know you've answered this, so please just humor me and answer again. When you look at renovating a building that's this old and we've said the roof is okay, we've said that the plumbing is okay, but I'm hearing the HVAC needs to be fixed and I don't even know what that all means, but how do you know you're not going to renovate this building and 10 years down the road have some huge expense because it's an old building and we should have just, because we're not going to take it all down. So you're still going to have the windows which are old, you're still going to have some of these walls, what do they call, support walls that you can't change or move. So how do you build a state-of-the-art building making sure you're not costing money down the road when you're renovating a building that's as old as this building?
Good evening. Mark Beebe of Lancer Plus Beebe Architects, I've got to answer your questions. So when we did our analysis of this building, the first thing we did after we did a thorough walkthrough is we analyzed all your existing joints.
Can I stop you right there?
Sure.
Because what do you mean by a thorough walkthrough? Like what does that mean? Like do people get under, there's no crawl space, I'm assuming? So do you get under the building? Do you crawl in the things? How do you?
We did a fair amount of peeking into all the spaces that typically you wouldn't get into because we worked for a director and went into every mechanical room. We didn't get into what you might call a, you know, getting into plumbing chases and so forth, but we got into every easily accessible space to analyze all the mechanical systems. So just to maybe answer a few of your questions, when we talk about the renovation plan for this building, that would include a new mechanical system. So it would include a fairly thorough, what we call a heavy gut renovation. So we'd be left with the existing structure and a fair amount of these exterior walls, the roof. So we're talking about the, you know, more the kind of the static elements, but not mechanical systems that would be replaced. In fact, a lot of the windows would be replaced due to the way that the classrooms would be reconfigured and we had a number of even additions we'd be looking at. So there would be a fair amount of new windows as well, the pride bulk of them. And we'd be looking at all the point pictures, for example. So in terms of the question, how thorough would this be and where would we, what would we be looking at downward? The system that we'd be putting in would be equal to whatever we'd be looking at for new construction in terms of mechanical systems, plumbing, so forth.
Is there a time differential when you're looking at renovating? Does it take time and does it build new? Is it equal? What does that look like, timeline?
Yeah, so we believe the construction period would be substantially shorter, my vision, renovation versus building it. So to keep in this perspective, new construction would involve a fair amount of site work right out of the gate, new drives, building nav, utility work. So even before we're talking about walls and so forth, we've got to get all the infrastructure put in place in the ground to come out. So, you know, we believe the renovation would be anywhere 12 to 14 months perhaps. There may be some phasing depending on which direction the, the board must go. The preschool would be kind of the question mark, whether we renovate and find new homes for those spaces while we're renovating. New construction would probably be around 18 to 20 months in average.
The cost reflected there, does that include that side preparation and for a new building?
It does.
So when I look at these figures, we're really almost equal, almost flat across the board. So I guess I struggle with one because I think that, I think I'm stuck between, I guess I'm with Kelly, I'm kind of in the middle with this. I think demographically, we're looking at a community that's growing, we know that. And, you know, between what we've paid for here as a district and what I've learned on the RDC is that individuals are moving to this community for two reasons. One, logistics where we are compared to where they work and our school systems. And I can't help but think that people expect a different level and a, a more innovative, creative learning space. And I struggle with can we truly get that if we renovate this building with what I think that our community wants and what they've reflected in the survey?
If I can piggyback on that just a second. With the design of this renovated, it looks like six classrooms that are completely intact with windows. And that's the more concerns I have, is you have six classrooms with no external windows.
Yeah, there are some classroom spaces that were more on the inside of the quarter, but we would have access to natural lights. So the, the design that we would look at would be, each grade level would have a kind of collaboration commons that would be circled around. Within that collaboration commons, we'd be looking for clearer story lights to bring in natural light and even with our, our classroom, we have some additions that we're looking at. We have the ability to introduce some new windows, so it's not perhaps direct windows at the classroom, but it would be views from the classroom either out through that collaboration commons as well as the natural light through the, through the common space.
So when you, when you said you would, I think you said this, maybe you would gut most of this building. So if you're gutting most of this, then I'm assuming you would be able to create a space that's state-of-the-art and very modern looking. Because I'm wondering if some of the hesitation, because if you look at the numbers on the survey, clearly people want a new building. And then I struggle with, well, we've got this and the reasonable thing to do, the, the, the.
Fiscally responsible.
You know those words. The fiscally responsible thing to do would be to use what we have and be responsible with that. But I think some of the concern might be, because as you said, people move here for the schools, they want state-of-the-art. We say all of our buildings are STEM certified, so why would we not have a brand-new shiny state-of-the-art building? So I wonder if some of the trouble is that we don't have a rendering of that because that was one of the questions before, what will it look like? So the outside won't look the same, right? It will be totally different, it'll look like a brand-new building. The inside should look like a brand-new building. So, so why wouldn't we just build a brand-new building? Why wouldn't we just tear this down or?
I'm assuming the main reason there is a cost differential is that we don't have to do the site work. That's where that savings is mostly coming from.
Yeah, it's a big part of it.
So, and so basically everything else is almost equal, it's that we don't have to pay for the site work.
So in the new building cost, that extra money is what you would do, whatever you do when you have land and you have to test it and I don't know.
Right. We'd have to develop all the new drives, the parking lots, all the utility work would be developed. So I just kind of go back just.
Sure, we're throwing questions back last, sorry.
Because we're trying to compare the, you know, that rendering for renovating this building versus new. The starting point was the building program we put together with our principal Stacy Muffler, director Elizabeth Quinn. So we, we started from scratch. We didn't really necessarily take in, we weren't thinking about this building when we built the program. We developed a program based on what would be ideally the right program regardless if it was here, if it was a new construction. So the building program we started with was thinking about perhaps as brand-new. So we took all of those program pieces and we, all the, those exciting dynamic educational spaces and then we began to filter them, layer them over this footprint and went through a series of, I don't know, three, four different Zoom meetings where we kind of, we tweaked things and kind of kept really tweaking the, the design to make sure that that program was truly met.
So you kind of started from scratch?
We did, yes.
With your design? You didn't look at the layout of this body and go, we can put this here and put this here. You just started from scratch, right?
Right. The only thing that we, that was maybe a fixed starting point was we didn't want to move the kitchen. So, you know, we started with that, everything and most of, there was some plumbing that we tried to leave in place, but otherwise we basically started from scratch. In fact, the rendering shows it's a brand-new door. We've got additions pushed out all over the place. And what's kind of ideal about this building, you can even see, there's a lot of demountable partitions.
Yes.
Meaning that it's not concrete blocks, it's actually very easy to manipulate the walls, reconfigure classrooms, we can adjust corridors really easily. That speeds up construction and reduces costs. It makes it easy and flexible for us to incorporate the dynamic classroom spaces that we, we know we want, even though we're perhaps looking at existing structure.
I also struggle with the, the renovation of this building and I know that you've done your homework and I trust that you've looked at all the mechanicals and HVAC, but we're experiencing this right now with our middle school. And so discoveries that were just found recently, some tile work that we didn't know that was there because it wasn't on the original blueprint. And so now we have a situation there. Every time we have a change order, that costs more money typically. You never come to us and say, we're going to take that off, usually. So I guess I just worry about that with this building. What's, what's unknown here for the price difference?
I think that's a good point because I think if we were doing the middle school now, knowing what we know, because we were new on, you guys were pretty new and we were brand-new on the board then. And I think had we known what we know now, some of the things that happened with that construction wouldn't have happened. So that's where I kind of think I am, is I'm worried we're not asking the right questions to make sure we're not going to have some of that happen at the end. It's, oh yeah, we didn't, we didn't know they were going to put showers and bathrooms in the locker room. Oh, how did we not know that? Because we just didn't ask, because we just assumed they would and we see what happened there. So that's a good point. I'm not sure what the question is there, other than just discussion of?
I think I, I did kind of hear a question in terms of managing the risk. Right? So a renovation of this building would be thorough enough that there, there wouldn't be, it's not kind of piecemeal project, it's thorough enough, there's, there's basically structure left that we, we know enough about that we, we've managed the, the risk of what that entails. The other thing that is built into this budget is a construction contingency to cover some of those unknowns as we perhaps would open a long, find a plumbing item that we didn't know was there. We can deal with that through the, the budget that we're looking at.
So a construction contingency that we don't use is money savings for appropriation?
Correct.
A question on, on top of that a little bit too, but because I heard mechanical, plumbing, a lot of that in the infrastructure. One of the things that I also heard that was excluded, or at least wasn't part of this, was the roof.
Right.
And we've been plagued a little bit by some of those, you know, so you start thinking about new and existing and where does all that come from? Certainly, you know, I'm concerned about roof and how do you, so two, two questions. How do you address the roof and, and create some confidence? And then the second one, maybe on the contingency part of it, what process do you use to determine you see, you saw all the corners and the nooks and the crannies so that you don't have structural or mechanical problems? I, I would assume, and my, my question, are those the big things you're looking for?
Yeah, that's it.
Mike Gray out. I can, I can speak to the roof. This has probably the best roof in the district on it because it's only about four years old. So it's, it's the one, no, great question, it's all, all things considered, but it's the one when our project manager did the evaluation, it was every square inch was in the high-quality rating. So that is one big asset for this building. Yep.
So if we, I have really appreciated how, sorry, while this building is utilized now, I think our, you know, when this building's set empty, we got a lot of feedback from our community because we weren't utilizing a great space. And I felt like one of the great things we did was move the, the administration into this building. We expanded our educational opportunities by offering a preschool. We provided a community space in our alumni room for our community to use, which was so important. And, and a chance, and a space for PLC, for our teachers to collaborate and that's been really important. So I can't help but wonder what that looks like again if we give up the space. We still have the cost of, we are needing the administration building, we need a space for our teachers to collaborate. I like offering a space that our community can use. And I do align with preschool being in the new elementary. I think that's, that's really key. But I worry about losing that other space and what could we do in this building for staff if we just, we fix the things that need fixed in this building because it's going to have to happen one way or the other. So I struggle with that.
So I don't know if this is more of a question for Greg or for you to answer, but my other bigger, big concern, and maybe we're not at a spot where we make any decision tonight, I don't know, but I know we're looking at the loss of money from the fire territory and we're looking at the loss of money from the increment. So if we take on this, whichever one we choose, how do, how do we know, and this goes back to where as a board member, we all have to try to make sure we ask the right question so that we get the answer that, that will help us in the long run. And if we're looking at not just right now, because we know right now we can afford it, but what about 10 years from now when all of us are, well, I don't think I'll still be on the board 10 years from now, who knows? But how, how do we know we're not getting ourselves into some financial bind that everyone around us is going to go, what the heck were you thinking back in 2020 when you made that decision? Yeah, Greg, do you want to answer that? I don't agree. What'd you say, Sean?
We'll say it was 2020.
We'll say it was 2020, we didn't know what we were doing. I hope, I don't know if I asked that question very well, but you know how I am with this money thing.
Perfect questions. So some of the, I guess, the, the advantages of the situation and the timing that we're in is first of all, talking about our debt service fund, which is what you saw on that graph, back up to the very beginning, and I said this, I think in both of our presentations to the public, we can, can, in the affirmative, finance this completely through our normal budget process through our debt service fund. We have that capacity. Now, as with every decision, there are pros and cons to everything. Nothing's totally pro, you know, and we can maybe talk about that if you want to, but Kelly, as you're alluding to, if, if things in the future change, I don't think they'll ever change to the point that a decision made now or, or a financial decision made in the next year or two would have the kind of long-term negative ramifications that you're think, that you're referring to because, you know, things would have to really change quickly and dramatically financially if we were to, let's say, you know, start doing site development sometime in the next year. And we start locking in financing at the current interest rates, for example, I mean, they're historically low. So that's, that's, that's the rate that you would pay on that debt over the course of the, over the course of time. That's a huge advantage. But let me, but let me dial in on the question you said and then, and then I'll let you follow up. So you're correct, our tax cap loss is increasing. We're, we're up to over $3 million a year. We are at 61% of all of the residential homeowners in our school district already at their cap. So the reality is for them, outside of reassessment of their property, no matter what we do, they're not going to see a change because they're already capped. Now, we're not standing up there and saying that we're going to raise the tax rate for this project because I just said, we can do it within the structure of our debt service. The debt fund is what they, is what we refer to as protected. In other words, for the sake of tonight's discussion, it's not impacted by the tax cap loss. That tax cap loss is fully shifted over to our operations fund. That's why it's in the predicament that it's in. That's why the increment, for example, of which 2021 is the last year that we can do that full transfer, you know, that increment is a curse and a blessing because it's, it has supported our operations fund with three, almost three and a half million dollars of revenue collected through our debt service. So when that gets cut by a third in 2022 and disappears in 2023, it creates a tremendous amount of space in our debt fund. But there's not very many good choices to replace that revenue to our operations fund. Again, because our tax cap loss, circuit breaker loss, we're going to call it contingency increase. And outside of one or two other choices, I will just say to myself, I've done about everything I can strategically with that budget, with the excess levy, with the tax cap waiver that's still an option for a couple of years. So I don't, I don't want to ramble on too long, but for us, one of the points you're making is those two funds, more so than most districts, are like this. There is a connection between those two. And while the debt fund is circuit breaker-proof, so to speak, all of our decisions have impacts on the other funds just because of the nature of the situation we're in. I would say though, that referring to some of the things that maybe happened 10, 12 years ago that brought about the increment, I see a lot, a very different situation. We just came off a year where our AV grew 8%. I don't know if it's going to grow 8% every year, but I'm pretty sure it's going to outrate or outpace the, the state growth factor, which is anywhere between 3.5%, 4%. That's a huge advantage for us. And then like I said, we're looking at setting up our financing at historically low. And then, like I said, we're looking at setting up our financing at historically low rates. So I think those two factors are quite a bit different from that time period before. And, you know, it would really have to change dramatically for, for some of those other circumstances to come into play like maybe did in, in the recent past. So does that help answer anything? I hope I didn't go off on a tangent there.
No.
I want to piggyback on that if I could. Stay there, Mr. Hopkins, in case I mess something up, you can fix me or throw something at me. So remember, we, we've talked about the, the price tags on projects and that there are certain thresholds. Anything we do with the elementary school is above the referendum threshold. That doesn't mean we have to have a referendum. That just means it's subject to referendum. We may want to have a referendum, I don't know. What we need to do is get through this next decision so we can detail out the other ones and then start planning our financing plan for all of these projects because it is a, it is a multi-tiered plan, we're not just doing one thing. But, you know, we may want to entertain a referendum. We may want to entertain a referendum for an operations fund, but all of that is in our future. But it is possible that even if we don't want to entertain a referendum for the elementary school, our citizens could push us to a referendum on an elementary school because it's above that level. Is that a good way to say it?
So, yeah, so if you think back, I think we shared this at least twice, maybe three times in public. Through the springtime, we had our stewardship public hearings. So right now, and, and it'll tweak and adjust a little bit for us, but statutorily, those projects at 5.3 million and below simply require board action. Yea or nay, thumbs up, thumbs down. And then the roofing and mechanicals that we did were in that, what I call the in-between threshold, between that up to about 16 million. Now, that is subject to petition remonstrance. In other words, if someone in the community wanted to go out, and I call it the plus one, right? They go door to door and they get one more signature against, which is that absolutely their right to do. We don't hide that because that's, that's the, the public's right to, to challenge or question those projects. But above 16 million, that, that first step is that the public can petition to have that project go on the ballot. Therefore, it becomes a, a referendum on that project. Then, or, or if no one did object to it, then it, then it would not necessarily have to be a referendum project. Now, the pros and cons of that are obviously if it goes on the ballot, it can lose and then there's like a two-year wait period. So that's the downside. And I may be exaggerating that a little bit. Anybody know, is it two, do you guys, do you guys know Mark Terry? I can't remember, it's about a two-year waiting period. If you come back with substantially the same project, before you can take a second bite at the apple. The pro side to that is that would then be outside of those tax caps. So that's a, that's an add-on to, you know, the people, again, just kind of being factual with our numbers, if your house appraised at $200,000, so you're going to pay 2,000 property taxes. And that's not just to the school, that's to the fire and the library and soil district and everybody else that takes their slice. So within the normal budget, if you're capped, you're capped, it doesn't really impact you. But what, but if that project would go on the ballot potentially and win, then that would be outside the cap, so that would be in addition to everyone. If it didn't go to the ballot, then we could proceed just like we would with any other project. It would just be, as I've said, within our debt service fund, subject to caps, which would all get shifted over to the operations fund potentially, depending on where we settled out with our tax rate.
But if it goes to the ballot, if the referendum goes to the ballot and it passes, then we're also able to tax those TIF districts.
Correct, so the AV, the tax base that we, that we set our rate on, which for us, and you would think I would come up here and have this number memorized, what we jumped up to, somebody help me, 1.22 billion this year, I think we jumped up to. I've run the numbers before, I should have memorized that. It's 1.45, somewhere 1.48 billion when the TIF, TIF, not only the TIF real estate, but also the, the TIF capital, which would come on, which would come into play in a referendum situation. Now, of course, that's a construction or capital referendum. As you know, just from our fairly meager, to be honest, roofing and middle school project, there are a lot of public hearings, a lot of steps involved in that process. So if, you know, if, if we, if we get into this threshold and, and, you know, the public doesn't put us in a situation where it has to go on the ballot, then that, of course, would be a decision that we would want to make if we would, if we would want to operate within the tax caps or outside, take our chances on, on outside the tax caps. Go ahead.
I want to ask if everybody just leave their microphones on, folks from home are having difficulties hearing us.
You can only have three at a time.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, tell you what, only three people have their microphones on at the time. But let's try to remember to turn them on and, and remind each other and then restate things.
Dr. Parker, I'm sorry.
Microphone on.
It's got to turn red.
Not the microphone button, the speaker, the speaker button.
I know you have the. I don't know.
You have two's Beths?
I don't know. Works for you, then.
Red light's on, but not the.
Yeah, this is kind of more a question for Dr. Parker. So if we decided to build another school, I'm sorry, we don't.
I, I can stay, I, I can stay or I can sit down and come back.
He can come back in his steps, anyway.
Okay, so my question's for you. If we decide to build another school at another location and renovate this to an admin building, this is a really big building. And if we're moving the preschool out, what are we going to do with this building? We're going to tear down half of it and renovate the rest into a middle, or an admin building? There just seems like a, there's a lot of square footage here that I don't see being used if we make an admin center.
Mine's not coming on now either. Beth, turn yours off.
Yes.
Ooh, now it's only one at a time. You know, those are discussions we need to have. And the, the issue is, we can't possibly think of everything at the same time and then price it out before we make one decision. Because by the time we have all of those conversations, all the variables have changed and then you have to go back and rerun all the figures again. So I'm a little anxious to get this next decision made, only because I want to have all those other discussions. We have so many decisions and conversations to make regarding our future growth plan. And while we can talk about several of them at the same time, we can't talk about them all at the same time. But you're right, we haven't talked about that, Tony.
Maybe, maybe, I think from a process and procedure standpoint, what I understand we're doing is opening up the door without settling on the actual option. And, and I think that's a really important point.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the board decides to do, whether we renovate or build new, that's the only decision. No money is spent, no design plans are finalized. There's still a lot of work to do in front of that, but now we can at least know which path to go down.
So the, what, what we do know is we know that, and this may, may apply to you, we know that our community's growing, we know that we need more space, we know that our current space today is not adequate. We have some proposals on the best footprint and plans to move forward with. At minimum, or at most, maybe, maybe the worst-case scenario is when you look at the debt, kind of the funding slide, we are able to manage our current debt service in such a way that it, it doesn't increase the tax burden to the community while we still address the two facts that we've talked about. Right, that's the important point. So as an action today, perhaps what we need to do is make, I don't, I'm struggling a little bit with procedurally where we go, but I think we may amend the motion to say, let's pursue, because it's not, we're approving, we're pursuing one of the options to better understand the details required to move forward. Does that, does that make sense?
But if we do that, then are we still stifling the process? If, if we say we're just going to continue to investigate, isn't, isn't that what we've been doing, investigating? And now we need to make a decision on?
I, I would not expect that once we chose which track we're going to go down or which path we're going to go down, that we would spend a lot of time on that path and then completely come back and go to the other path. I would be surprised if we switched paths. And I don't think for us to be able to plan this just in time, we need a maximum flexibility. So we need to get moving down one path so that we can plan everything out in detail, when we're going to build, when we're going to bond, when we're going to do all the pre-work for bonding, how much is that going to cost, how's that going to impact our operations fund? We have so many other details to work on, I, I would not expect us to back up.
Okay. And, and one thing that you didn't mention in your list of what we know and what we need to take into consideration, and that is what our community said to us in the survey.
Very good.
Where they fall. And I think we have to make sure that that's part of what we're thinking about.
You have to use Beth's.
Okay, but that's, to, to be fair though, that was, to be fair though, that was 47 people. And out of those 47 people, some of them don't live in our school district. Right, and so they're not going to pay. If you look at those 47 people, they may be parents, but they may not live in the school district, which means they're not going to vote and pay the property taxes under the term of decision we decide to make. So it's just a small sample size. So I, I, I saw the data, I'm listening to the data, but I'm also taking that into account.
I guess I, I want to add a couple, just a couple of things. I know we're, I feel like we're talking in circles and I don't mean for, I'm sorry, everybody. Greg, you might have sat down too soon, but one of my, you don't have to come back, maybe.
I can, I can.
Based on everything you just said, and I'm going to be very honest that I'm not sure I understood all of that, but I never do, so I try. What I don't want to happen is, is 10 years, five years from now, for, for Dr. Parker to come and say, you know what, we don't have any money, we can't get teachers raises, we're going to have to riff people, you know, we're going to have to do this, we're going to, we can't buy textbooks, we can't. I guess that's really what I want to make sure, that if we're doing this, we're not at some point going to assure our teachers and our students in what they need. Because to me, the building, yes, it's very important, but having our teachers and being able to pay them and our, our students getting what they need, which I know is a building, they need good buildings. So, I mean, based on what you said, is that, I know there's no way you're going to say, yes, that's a possibility or no, it isn't. But is that fear infounded?
Partially, but I think it's because there, there, it's, I hate the cliche, but it's a little bit apples and oranges because of the sources of funding. So again, the debt service is protected, so the cap increase won't, won't impact it. Now, that doesn't say, again, being kind of purposely repetitive, that doesn't mean that it lives in isolation. Every fund impacts something else. But I think the things you're referring to are going to depend on biennial budgets from the State House and the per pupil funding and our increased enroll, continually increasing enrollment are the factors that, that are going to make teacher pay and supporting curriculum. You know, that's where that funding's going to come from. The elephant in the room, for another cliche, for us, is, has been and will be the operations fund and how we keep that alive. And to go back to that increment, the, the plus side of the increment going away is that creates $3.5 million of space in our debt service to help us do things we're talking about tonight. So, you know, we're going to have to look at other new ways to support the operations fund. That's not a maybe, that is absolutely a given. We're, we're, we bought ourselves 12 to 18 months of solvency in the operations fund with some of the things you've approved this year. And it's taken us to where we will zero out in 2024. So we've gained a year once the increment goes away. So, you know, your question is, yeah, there's things can, things can happen to where those, those expenses that you mentioned could be in a real bind. I don't think it's going to happen necessarily in terms of the decision you made with the debt fund. Or we were forced to put a project outside of the caps in its own referendum fund. I, I don't think that impact's going to, I don't think there's going to be the impact on the things you just questioned. There are other factors that we have to deal with to make sure that those kinds of things don't happen.
And I think it's important to remember that we've said we will not do anything until we see the whites of their eyes. So some of the things I think that are concerned in the back of your mind, we need to remember, we're not putting a shovel in the ground until we know we, we have those, the enrollment to support that. I think one of the things I've learned over the last six years of being on the board is that even though there are two separate funds, I almost turned up with that comment, but I didn't. Is that, even though they're separate, they do impact each other. But what I also, I think here is that this, some of this is going to be a level of trust in that you know what you're doing, you guys know what you're doing, and we have to trust you with the process and that we're going to take some leaps of faith to say, we're going to go down this path and you're going to help us stay financially okay.
Well, and I'll, I'll add in too, we're not proposing that we just throw this all into one great big project and we just start digging and renovating and moving all of the things that you've seen in this future growth plan at one time. So there's, there's purposeful staging and separating, legal separating of, of, of projects. Certain things have to happen first because there's a natural domino effect that could, that is going to take place. But, you know, one of the other fail safes that we have in this is if we see circumstances change, then we can pump the brakes on some things and say, okay, this is where we stop for now. We, we've addressed this need and, you know, we're, it's not time, it's not the right time to go to the next, the next step or the next phases in our overall future growth plan. It's like, it's like Dr. Parker says, this is the question in front of us because the answer to this then sets off this whole next phase of planning, which to be, to be honest, a big portion of it's going to revolve around those thresholds and those project separations and how, how we can function financially and, and finance those. Because that's going to take a while to, to plan that out, for sure.
All right. I guess the other thing I wanted to add, and I'm not sure where we are in the discussion, but I, I feel like, I mean, I, looking, based on the answers we've got tonight, I feel like, you know, we, this building, I'm trusting, can be renovated into a, a state-of-the-art building based on, on Mark's answers of, you know, gutting it and all those kind of things. I feel like we need to think about what we need and not what we want and I, you know, not what we want, not what we need. Did I say that? What we need and not, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sweating, I'm nervous. You know, we need a new building and we want a state-of-the-art, brand-new building somewhere. But if we can get that state-of-the-art building with something we, in a spot that we already know, is that not the more responsible thing to do? But I, I, I don't know where we are with the discussion. I, I can see the other side of it too, where starting from scratch is the better idea because of all the things you said. So I don't know if we're ready to make a decision. I'm going to turn off my mic and let you guys keep talking because I don't, I'm not sure where we are with, with, with all of it. Do we feel like we're ready to make a decision? They're all just looking at me.
So I think with the discussion that we've got right now, and, and it doesn't seem like we're at the point where we, we feel that comfortable yet. Now, the challenge with that though, is that we, we are faced with time. So we got to, we got to move fast. One of the reasons that I, that I made the move, motion around this building too is some of the site plans really seem to center our campus right here. And the transportation flow, et cetera, et cetera, makes, you know, makes, for me, that's what, what seemed to make a lot of sense. Now, do we do a new building, do we renovate the building? If we're uncomfortable with that, I think the finances themselves, I feel very comfortable with. Feel very comfortable with finances, I feel very comfortable with the approach we're taking. You've got people that have been working on these buildings for a long time with us, that make good partners with us. We're going to have to, you know, so I, me personally, I feel trustful on that.
Well, what else do we need to know though? Why, why would we wait another month to make a decision? What would, what else, what else can they, can be, what else can be brought to the table that would make us go, yep, that's the pass and no, that's not the pass?
That's a good question.
Can I ask a question about the traffic pattern that Mike just mentioned? I wish Context was here because I think they did a great job, their work is brilliant. I love the way they laid it out in a perfect scenario, if, if there ever was such a thing as a perfect scenario on a school campus. But with the projected growth comes more traffic. Do we feel that that plan that was presented accommodates that many more individuals and that much more traffic on this campus?
I'd like to answer that first and then Mark can back clean up, if that's okay with you all. I've experienced a very large school, I was a principal. I've experienced a very large school, I was a principal of a very large middle school who was on the same campus, across the road from the high school and across the parking lot from an elementary school. And the things that I learned from that, and those schools were very large, is that traffic's only a problem at two times, at two instances. One of those instances is pickup and drop-off, and the other is special events. And pickup and drop-off wouldn't be a problem because we have pickup and drop-off at different times for elementary and secondary. So, it's really only crazy busy for, what, 30, 40 minutes, principals, what do you say, max? One, two times a day. And as long as that's at a different time as another school on the same campus, it's actually smart because you can utilize the same paths and drives and parking and drop-off, which is what Apprezzo's designed. The other time that parking, or excuse me, that traffic's a problem is special events. And being able to build parking lots that can be shared by multiple schools, I experienced that with my old school many, many moons ago, we made sure to just not plan big parent events with the elementary school right next to us because they needed our parking lot. And when we did our big choir shows, they made sure not to schedule anything on their, on that night because we needed their parking lot. So, there's a bit of economy by that. Mr. Beebe, is there anything else that you could add to her question? Right into the mic.
Okay, all right, you covered pretty much everything. Context, wish they would have been here tonight, I'm sure they're listening in on the conversation, but I know they would tell you, they also looked at all the enrollment projections, in factor that is their circulation path, so that's part of the design.
And I recall there was even the path where you could even change one of the roads, if you, down the road if you need to, to circumvent the road in between the high school and the middle school completely and rewrap traffic if we got to that point. So, they did have like future possibilities on that drawing as well.
Yep, Mark gave you a thumbs up. Before you continue your discussion, I want to make sure I'm clear. Mr. Riccardi, I heard you say things, and I just want to be really clear. You made the motion for option two. Option two is building a new school from scratch. But what you said a few moments ago made it seem like your motion was about renovating this building.
No, no, I'm sorry. I was referring to the site.
Okay.
Okay. So, the site and then the different parts of the campus.
Okay.
So, I think, what I was thinking about too is the site itself and how we want to, this building is the center of the campus today. And so, as we think about traffic and flow, et cetera, how do you, how do you diversify that, how do you decentralize it in such a way that it'll allow us for campus growth and for building growth, et cetera? So, that was...
With building the new elementary.
That's the building the new elementary.
And that's building the new elementary someplace else.
Someplace else.
Oh, real quickly, it is important to note that the price for the new elementary doesn't include new land. So, if we don't build it on land that we own or are planning to own, it would be additional dollars.
With the land that we're currently purchasing, though, is there space to build?
I believe so. I think we have land in spades.
I don't think that would help with the traffic in the, because it's right here. So, it would just depend on how the traffic was routed in and out of that parking lot. I mean, that could be controlled.
Sure. Sure, and those plans will be adjusted. Mark, do you agree with my assertion that if we purchase the north property, that in itself will give us all the land we need and the east property would be gravy?
Yes, there's ample space there.
Thank you.
So, Mark, can I ask you another question? Maybe you won't want to answer this. What, if you guys had to recommend one or the other, which would you recommend or can you not do?
I would ask that, too.
I thought maybe I shouldn't ask this.
I would.
I couldn't be giving pros and cons?
Yes, that'd be great.
If you could see it?
Yeah, I would love that.
Now you make him sway.
I'm sorry. I have it written down here and I thought, I'm just going to ask.
So, we've already talked about sort of cost and schedule, you know, in terms of pros and cons, so that you can kind of see where that falls. Some of the benefits of renovating this building, we just, you've seen the synergy with sharing, it's been mentioned already, sharing existing outdoor support spaces, whether that's parking for those group units, access to the track, perhaps even having proximity to SROs, those sorts of things that you'd have here. So, there's benefits to being central campus, you know, beyond just the cost and schedule. You know, the circulation path that Context developed actually was a pretty clean way of getting buses in and out of middle school and the elementary together to minimize, it sort of minimizes how many times buses are pulling on and off of the county road because it's kind of a consolidated path, there's some benefits of that. Of course, the, on the flip side, some pros of building new, more flexibility perhaps with exactly the footprint and the site layout and exactly, you know, what it could look like. Also, benefits to picking maybe a strategic location, you know, so that, so just pros and cons either way. Those were just a few that we had kind of thought through as we were thinking through the design. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Thank you, yeah, that is helpful. So, I guess we need to, do we want to move forward with a vote or do we want to pull that off and do it next month with...
I can come back. I have a little more to say, but we can align either way.
Tony?
I'm not, I'm not sure what the eye contact is meaning here, I'm sorry. I don't, I guess I don't know what other information we need for, to wait another month unless there is something out there that we just haven't asked and haven't discussed. I feel like, I feel like, I feel like if we're so undecided, or maybe we're not undecided, then we shouldn't move forward.
Because we do need, we do need a little bit of a consensus here, we need to feel comfortable and we're moving in the right direction.
And the current motion is to go with...
Option two.
Number two.
Now, if the group's not comfortable with option two, we can certainly vote that one down and you can go with option one.
Put the motion on the floor, we have to redo the motion.
All right.
If we're going to cut it off for a month, then what do we do with the motion?
You can table it.
We just tabled the motion? Do I need a motion to table the motion?
Yes, you do.
So, let me ask, can I ask this? If we table it for a month, we do have new board members coming on in January, how comfortable they come on January 11th, I believe, is when we have our meeting with them? So, how comfortable would they be with, you know, a week or two to make this vote? And does that prolong us into another month and another, you know?
And I know it's important for us to make this decision and move forward one way or the other.
And I also, you know, I think Tony's hesitant because, we talked about this, just the fact that they're going to be a part of this project with us for the next four years and we want to make sure they're comfortable as well. So, it's a consideration thing, but...
That's a good point, yeah.
I don't know that you can wait months to bring everyone to where we are with this since we've been working on this for months.
You know, it's unfortunate that we're wanting to make a decision in between two different boards. I'm not too wound up about you guys deciding in January, that's not a big deal to me at all. I don't mind waiting a month, I think we have the flexibility to do that.
Would we feel that our new members would be brought, would be ready to vote then at that meeting? I mean, we're struggling and we've been doing this project for months. Are they, do you feel they would be ready?
You have your rework meeting on the 11th and then the monthly meeting is the last Monday of the month, what day is that?
Uh, like that.
Yeah, so you have, you have two meetings in January.
Right.
We do, we...
And we do.
You'd have more. You'd have more than one.
But they would have access to the information as soon as, as soon as January 1st.
They've seen it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I feel comfortable, we can get them up to speed, get to the point where they, because they have seen it, they're not going to see it fresh in January, they have seen all this stuff.
So, I think what I'm hearing is we need to table the motion. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think so.
Is that a motion?
Can I?
I'm with you, we table this motion until the next official board meeting in January.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by my executive, by Tony, that we table the motion to the January meeting. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. All right. Thanks, everybody.